...sport that they can play well past high school.
Well, just to kind of piggyback on that, you know, there's scholarships out there every year for particularly female golfers and for our kids to have an opportunity to maybe get a scholarship and have their school pay for it just for that, I think is huge. My wife works with a lady who never played golf in her life. She went out, tried out for the team, somehow made the team, and she got a scholarship to KU to play golf.
For one?
Yeah.
There are golf scholarships, especially females, males not, but females, there are female golf scholarships that are not claimed every year.
So, that's just another way that we can help our kids maybe get their school paid for.
No, what was your thing before this you had to say?
Thank you, sir.
Well, that's why I want to figure in the cost.
And you have a coach in mind?
We have somebody who's interested.
Someone who's interested.
I think if we're going to do something like this, we need to have some kind of protocol in place to start up because I've had some people come to me and say, "Well, why can't we start wrestling again? Why can't we do the other things?" So, if we're gonna do this, we need to have some rules and criteria and say, "Look, here's the way we're gonna restart, here is what it's gonna take if we don't have this many kids, or what is it gonna take to not have the sport?" You know, so I'm not saying-
And I did look into that myself. Wrestling is expensive.
I'm not arguing-
Well, no, I'm not trying to argue with that, I'm just telling you. The mats, the, I mean, it's expensive.
Space.
Yeah, we also, yeah, that's the big one.
Tryaway gym, I've had that mentioned, tryaway gym-
I have had it mentioned several times.
-not doing anything, so there's space. And also wrestling will help their football program, and we all know when the football team's successful, that's where we make our money.
You know, I mean, I just think before we jump into this headlong and say no or yes, we just need to have some ideas of how we're gonna do it. What does it look like? Because somebody comes in and they wanna start underwater basket weaving or whatever it is, we need to have an idea. Can we tell them no? Well, I don't know, what's the rules? What's the, how do we do it?
I think if, I mean, if there's an interest, if the kids have an interest in golf, if we can fill a golf team, why don't we fill a golf team? If we can fill a wrestling team, why don't we fill a wrestling team? You know, that's-
A lot of it comes down to money. I mean, by the time you add these things in, I mean, guys, we're still, if you look on the pay scale, you know, we still, we gave our teachers a great raise, but we're still way down on the line. I'm open to, it's your turn, guys, talk to me. We need to decide what we wanna do, if we wanna take it under advisement.
We haven't discussed yet what kind of grades we are getting on, we discussed, but that was not said, so-
Right, we'll make the recommendation.
Is that gonna be in here?
Yeah.
Oh, you can't see it, okay. Budget.
Yep.
I mean, I can't believe we're shifting gears to wrestling. I mean, we had wrestling when I was in school, and then I think it was my senior year, they discontinued it.
Then why did they discontinue it?
I think it was, I think there was two things. There was starting to be a slow attrition of athletes that wanted to participate, is trying to fill all the weight classes, and I also think Mr. Alvin, who was the wrestling coach then, I think he moved to Utah, so we didn't have another wrestling coach then.
They had, that was, I think that was just- Because when I taught here, and he was, and he was here, he left, I mean, we didn't have wrestling. When I was a teacher here, when I was a student, we had it.
I know, but I thought, I thought he had left and came back by then.
Oh, okay, perhaps.
When he, when he came back, but I think that's, that's what it was, and we had a, we had a state champion wrestler here. And you're right, you know, the only thing that's prohibiting anything, and I'll be honest with you, I did not think two things about tryaway, and that would be, that's probably, other than having an actual tournament there, but I mean, practice would probably be ideal, ideal there. I mean, Mark doesn't have enough to do anyway, so he could probably, you know, check, check that out.
I'm good with it.
But, you know, how many weight classes are there?
There's several, I mean-
There's probably ten?
I think there's thirteen.
Thirteen?
Yeah.
I mean, and so, you know, single it, and then you're, you know, paying your coach, and probably the, probably your single grace expense is probably just your mat, you know, pay for that and everything.
And you'd need two for tryaway. You'd want two full-size mats.
But, but like you said, you know, it, it's just, it's cost for everything. Golf is a negligible cost as opposed to wrestling, which would probably be maybe, you know, double, triple.
Do we put a priority and say golf is more important than wrestling? You guys are people that would disagree with that.
I will, I will say this as an ex athletic director at Diamond, you guys know that I was there for a year. They are completely different sports. At Diamond, we had golf, and we also had wrestling. Yes, the financial commitment is completely different. It is a major investment. But golf is one of those sports that, just say hypothetically, we could start tomorrow, and our kids could go out, and the kids practice, and they could compete. I'm just, I'm just being honest with you. Wrestling is one of those sports where, I think Casville, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe they did have youth for quite a while, they wanted to see a youth investment, not just a verbal commitment, but they, they saw a youth investment before they actually jumped in as a high school, which makes sense. If we were just to say, "Hey, we're gonna do wrestling," we've, we've got, none of our kids have any background in wrestling. You understand what I'm saying?
Except for those ones that are going somewhere else to do it.
Yes, absolutely. So, with that being said, you're asking for some criteria. I'm not saying we shouldn't do golf because we haven't had a youth golf program, I'm not saying that, but sports are different.
But does one equal the other, is what I'm saying.
Well, I'm just saying with that particular sport, with golf, we could start that up like this, and our kids can go and compete and be, and compete. I'm not gonna say how successful we would be, I'm saying, but that, that opportunity is there and it's reasonable. To just start a wrestling program up just out of whim, that's, that's a tough ask because we have no experience with that. You gotta, you gotta have a, a coach willing to do it, you gotta have all those different components ready to go, and, I mean, to me, when we're looking at it, we're looking at opportunities. Golf is an opportunity for kids that may not be able to participate in a lot of other things, whether that be, you think about kids that we have in ag that don't do anything, but they have, ag is their thing, or golf is their thing, or choir is their thing, or band is their thing, whatever the case may be. There may be, there's gonna be some kids out there where, where golf is their thing, and wrestling is their thing. She mentioned the football players. It is, coming from my experiences at Diamond and at Neo Show, the wrestling is a hu, it's, it's big, it's a big commitment, but man, is, does it help our kids. It keeps kids busy throughout the, the winter that typically would not be busy, but I think the wrestling is a completely different conversation for a completely different scenario, but I see what you're saying. You're saying if we move forward, how do we manage?
Right.
Once we turn the faucet on, how do we turn it back off, and what criteria do we wanna have?
You don't open that, that can of worms.
It all, it all makes sense, but the wrestling component is a big component.
I would also say this too. The reason we're talking about golf is because an interest was shown in golf, enough to, you know, the kids were asking about it, can we do this, parents were asking about it, can we do this? And I'm, maybe it has, I haven't heard that same thing about wrestling. If that were to occur, I know when football programs first start, they typically don't start full-blown varsity program. They might start, okay, we're gonna see this, we'll start with a JV, let's see how-
Actually, they usually start with junior high.
Junior high.
So, they start with seventh graders, and you have them wrestle, then they become eighth graders, and when they become eighth grade, after eighth graders, and they become freshmen, and then you do a JV schedule, sophomore JV schedule, then after four years of doing that progression, and you still, then you have sophomores through seventh graders in your program, then you see if you're ready to make the leap to varsity, and sometimes you're not. That's how Diamond started football all those years ago. I was there when they, I was there the first year they started football in Diamond, and we started with a varsity, played Seneca the first game.
Good time.
Got beat eighty-six to nothing. Shouldn't have been on the field. So, I mean, you gotta, you gotta, as Seth is saying, you gotta build into that. So, if there's that interest there, and then, then you can spread that cost out over the years, so that's the thing.
I wonder if we have anybody that is experienced in coaching that here?
I don't know. I can get a kid back from Casville that just became their old line coach, if you want a wrestler. He's a Mac County grad. We interviewed him, didn't offer him, not in Casville.
I think that's a year away, though.
So, start the conversation now, and then come back and, and get to the spring and see, you know, then start gauging interest of students, and, and you, the kids in the high school aren't gonna benefit from it because you're not gonna start a high school program. That would, that would be a mistake.
So, we're gonna start golf, we're just gonna go ahead and, and full-blown varsity, and we do it?
And as Seth said, it's different.
I understand.
So, yeah, I mean-
So, what constitutes a success? I mean, what are we looking at? What is the goal that we're looking at? Are we gonna have a full team of ten kids, ten guys and ten girls, or what is, you know, how are we going to gauge success on this? Not the winning, losing.
Isn't it team four?
Five.
Five.
Yeah.
Out of varsity or JV?
So, what are we looking at? What are we thinking the number of participants is gonna be?
Well, I mean, if we go off of the number of kids who showed up to the meeting, who showed interest, we were in the twenties for girls and the thirties for boys, so it'd be something where we'd actually have to cut kids, probably. Now, as far as immediate success, you know, I don't, you know, I'm not a golfer, I couldn't tell you what immediate success looks like. I think if you field the team and the kids progress and get better, then that's kind of what we're looking for early on. Obviously, if we get into year two and then we're not fielding ten kids per team, you know, maybe we reevaluate. But as long as you have the interest there and there are enough kids going out for it, then I have to think that you look at the program as semi-successful, is getting kids out to participate in other things.
Wouldn't it be better if we had some kind of goal instead of just saying, "Oh, we're just gonna go ahead and jump in and do it"?
Yeah, our goal is to win state every year.
Every coach has that goal.
That's, that's the goal, that's, every sport you play is to win.
But realistically, what could we look at on first-year golf?
You'd never know.
I, I think you're really, I think you're probably looking at participation level probably more than anything. As far, as far as, you know, if, if we sit, if we put this out here and we have one kid come out like, "What did we do wrong here?", you know, that we need to do, we need to do a better job of this. On the, on the flip side, I can remember when we first started cross-country, numbers were huge.
Yeah.
They were, they were huge. And then, you know, the novelty eventually wears off, you know, just like with, just like, well, it's the girls probably. The boys, the boys will be freezing, the girls are gonna be, you know, beat to death with sun, you know, during their season, so I mean, it's, it's gonna be getting out there and, and seeing, you know, what the engagement level is. I think that's the way you're gonna judge your success. And then, it's just like with anything else, how much time are you putting into it? How many, how many free throws am I shooting every day? How many shots am I shooting? How, how much am I studying my, my horses for my ag contest? It's just like with anything else, and that's where you're gonna show, you know, the success that way. We're just given the opportunity to say, hey, you can showcase your talent here, are you willing to do it?
And I think if you go at the end of the year and sit at a banquet, you'll see whether your investment was worth it or not. I mean, no different than if you go to the end of the year ag banquet and you see all the kids receive recognition, and the parents there recognizing them and enjoying that. I think if, hypothetically, if we were to put golf into play, I think if you go to the banquet, at the end of the year banquet, and see how proud the kids are of being a part of something bigger than themselves, I think you, that, that to me is success. When you're looking at success, how, is that program successful? Well, there's ten or twenty kids that we had an opportunity to impact in a positive way, and without it, we probably wouldn't have had that opportunity. So, to me, that's success.
Okay. Where do you want to go from here?
I think, with me, I think you all, if you can, you know, I reckon, I, I made my recommendation months ago. I would recommend that we start golf, so it's up to you all to vote on what you would like. I'm not saying you have to, I'm saying that's your, you're the board, you're the ones that do that, so.
And then we can still look at the wrestling.
Absolutely, I can do a cost analysis for it as well, if you'd like.
For sure, I, I would like to see it.
I would exit.
And then maybe visit with some of the kids to-
Interesting.
Interesting, see, I think that would be-
Well, that's gonna, remember, that's gonna be a multi-year process.
Right, right.
You can't start varsity because you just get kids hurt, so.
Well, you know, like Neo Show's been so successful because when those kids barely stand up-
They've got youth.
-they're in a program, you know, you just throw our kids in there, they have no idea what's going on.
Right.
I remember back when I was here, there was kids that were going here that were competing in like clubs elsewhere, you know, so it wouldn't surprise me if there's a couple of kids right now that are wrestling at clubs and elsewhere, you know.
The parents that contacted me about wrestling have little kids, they don't have junior high, high school kids. They're looking to the future.
Right, you know, I, you all know me, I'm a sports guy. I'd love us to have every single sport out there because it helps kids, and of course, band and choir. Participation, it's all about get- Kids enjoy school and are more successful when they are active with doing something at school. If it's ag, if it's choir, if it's band, if it's football, if they're active at school, they have a better experience and they're more likely to graduate. It's that simple. So, if you can get kids active in something and get their attention, get the hook in, you know, like Scott said earlier, if it's choir, if we got, if we got the next, you know, like, we got the next Elvis over there in our building, and he is active in singing and loves it, and that gets him out of bed in the morning, I get to go to choir every day, I get to go sing every day. If it gets him out of bed, and he comes to school, and to be eligible to be in choir, he has to pass his classes, so he passes his classes just so he can sing, then that is a success. And I, so anything, it's not just sports, but anything that gets kids active, in my opinion, is a good thing.
Well, I will make a motion then to proceed with having a boys and girls high school golf team.
Is there a second?
One second.
Moved and seconded that we proceed with having a girls and boys golf team. Any other discussion?
Discussion?
Seeing none, we shall proceed to vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. opposed? Motion passes four to two. Okay, we will proceed. Let's talk a little bit on policy updates. We got those last month, I believe, and they are-
And then I put the summary in here again this month, but yes, we got a big stack.
Okay, remember, we do not have to have an action on these, we just need to review them. We can vote on those if we want, but we don't need to till next month.
And you can change order in these things, so we can say what you want to say, and then the lawyers must be able to look at it and be sure it doesn't conflict with anything else, and we'll write it the way we want it.
Okay, you wanna go ahead and do something with this? Do you wanna review them again this month and work on next? What's your thoughts?
Vote next time.
Okay. Let's review these, and we will have the action on these in July. Moving right along, under new business, we need to amend the budget to audited and actual. So, we got that in front of us, I believe. That's the one with the red, blue, and green lines on it. I don't know how to change, we probably will get a slide on that.
Sorry, I need to take a break real quick here.
Okay, we're under the amended twenty-two, twenty-three budget to audited actual.
All right, that is this right here. Our adopted budget at the beginning of the year was sixteen point five. Our actual budget ended up being seventeen point three. Expense, that was revenue expenses. Our adopted budget at the beginning of the year was fifteen point six million, ended up being sixteen point three, so I need you to amend it to what we, not what we adopted, but what we actually spent. And we spent seven, or we, our revenue was seventeen point three million, and our expenses were sixteen point three, and that is as of this morning, that is adopted, actually, this month number might be wrong because I just had to change twenty-five bucks, but you're not adopting these numbers, you're adopting the actual numbers that we, this is just a display to show what it was.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we update the-
To the actual.
Audited actual.
Audited actual. Is there a second?
Audited actual budget.
Moved and seconded that we accept the actual audited budget. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Motion passed six oh.
You have the twenty-three, twenty-four budget in front of you. This includes a fifteen hundred dollar raise for anyone that makes, in, in the certified side, anybody that makes over thirty-eight thousand dollars is getting a fifteen hundred dollar raise. Anybody that makes under thirty-eight thousand is getting the state grant to give them up to thirty-eight thousand. So, that, that includes that, and then it includes a fifteen hundred dollar raise for all classified folks, bus drivers, because they're not full-time, get seven hundred and fifty, and that's all included in this budget, as well as the three hundred thousand dollars for the, the parking lot upgrades, and then as well as, um, what else we got in there? Oh, the five, uh, using career, not career ladder, but team tutoring for the, another year, almost exactly like we did last year. I think five thousand dollars going to sponsor folks that can, they can go get that five thousand dollars, work tutor for fifty hours and make five thousand dollars. All your veteran teachers and younger teachers, we'll do the same thing we did last year to get them up to five thousand dollars, and that's included in the budget. And then when you look at the end of the day, projected revenue versus expenditures is still ninety-three, nine, nine, nine hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars to the, to the good, that's with all that included there.
Are we doing the thirteenth check again, or is the fifteen hundred dollars an actual raise?
The fifteen hundred dollars is an actual permit raise from now on.
Yeah.
And in the, if the thirty-eight thousand dollars continues, the governor continues, and it's fully funded this year as well. So, what was that number, two hundred?
Two hundred, almost two hundred and sixty-four thousand.
That the state is going to pay to get our folks up to thirty-eight thousand, and with that, we still have to pay their retirement. We still have to pay the fourteen and a half percent out of us, so that's our, that's our hit on it, which is negligible. So, this is, and with this budget, that gives us about a nine hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar revenue to the good, and of course, part of that is gonna be continued with, Laurie's gonna do worker magic with the auditor and get some of that after-school snack program money to where we, we don't get a huge surplus in there.
Pay some salaries out of that.
Yep, and so, a lot of that, some of that will, will be restricted funds, but other part, some of it will not be, and you'll just have to, I can't predict that right now, we'll just have to determine that at the end of the year. And that is not including the one point seven million dollars of S R three that is still sitting out there.
Is the tutoring, is that a thirteenth check?
Yes, that'll be a thirteenth check. Yep, that, that'll be exactly the same way last year. So, all your, all, everybody's getting the fifteen hundred dollar raise, that's going into their salaries. So, that will be a monthly increase for them. If you do the math, that's a hundred bucks a month, basically.
What was it for pairs? Are pairs just like bus drivers? Oh, they're fifteen as well, okay.
Everybody.
Just bus drivers, they'll be seventy.
Correct, because the bus drivers don't work, usually work thirty hours a week, so they don't fall into that full-time category.
Okay, and what's that percent that it's going to, for admin?
Admin? It'd be the four percent. It, it, it's actually a little bit less than what the, everybody else is getting. Everybody, your classified folks are getting a four point five, six percent, four point five, six percent raise. Teachers aren't getting, your teachers aren't getting that much, and the administrators won't get that much, they will get that, that jump. So, it's based on a percentage of the overall raise that they're getting, so the fifteen hundred dollars, so.
The same thing, so why I'm getting that?
They will get more than fifteen hundred dollars because it's, yeah, because it's based on the salary schedule, the administrative salary schedule.
And all that's figured in?
Yep, that's all figured in there.
What did, what was that percentage that you figured in?
For the administrators?
Yeah.
It's not gonna be much more. I mean, it, it all depends on how much you make. If you, the teachers who make more are gonna get less of a percent, if you give them fifteen hundred dollar raise, they get less of a percent. With the administrators, it'll be probably about the same as the classified folks, about four percent. And your younger teachers are, it's gonna be four percent. Your veteran teachers, it's gonna be less than that, just because it's-
So, we're just talking about the percent, we're not talking, everybody's getting fifteen.
Right, well, administrators, the, well, the fifteen hundred percent, or fifteen hundred percent, fifteen hundred dollars on the classified side, it's a little different because we gave them percentage increase based on the, the increase from the base, go from thirty-two to thirty, going from thirty-two, five to thirty-four, for your average classified person, that's the four and a half percent. So, we, that, it's, it'll be fifteen hundred dollars for some of them, some of them will be fifteen oh six, some of them will be fourteen eighty-four. So, it's gonna be, and it's gonna be about that. That's how that works. Because we can't give them an exact fifteen hundred dollar raise.
Okay, questions, comments?
And then remember in August, you'll come back and Ms. Charlton will have a revision for you because this is based on one point five percent assessed evaluation increase, it's gonna be more than that.
We typically have had, especially before we came, we had like two or three, we had different budgets to-
Proposed budgets.
Yeah.
You did that one year.
I did that my first year, yeah. I didn't think there'd be a necessary, with nine hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars to the, to the black, I didn't think that'd be really, or I didn't really think it'd be necessary.
Okay, have I got any questions? Now's your chance on this. If you don't understand something, now's a good time to ask. I know the black and the red and the green and the blue might not mean a lot to you, but-
The green is our expected savings now. The, if you look at operations, go down the operations one where it says estimated fund balance of four million and forty-six thousand, that is your unrestricted funds. So, that is why it's twenty-eight point eight percent. Your overall funds, that's including capital improvement, which is restricted, and debt service, which is restricted.
Right.
And food service is under the cap, will be under the capital, capital area there. So, that gives you a total fund balance of, or estimated fund balance for twenty-twenty-three fiscal year at six point five million dollars at the end of the year, but only four million of that is unrestricted. So, that's why you have twenty-eight percent of our seventeen, this is a fifteen million dollar, sixteen million dollar budget. Sixteen million dollar budget, four million of that is about just under thirty percent, if that makes sense.
Twenty-nine percent working reserve is pretty sticky, yes.
That's about two percent. From where we were three years ago, this is outstanding. Three years ago, we were at nine and a half percent.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Before we, before we pass this and move on, everybody good with it?
Do we have to vote on it?
Yes.
It's still based on thirty to five.
And I make a motion to accept the budget summary yet?
One second. Moved and seconded to accept the budget as presented.
Do you second it?
No. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, six oh. Let's move on.
You should have the extracurricular salary schedule ahead of you. Aren't any major changes? It's still based on, it's still a percentage based on thirty-two, five. We did not change that, so it stayed right there at thirty-two, five.
Why did we not change it?
It's a substantial amount of money. What was it, a hundred?
Almost a hundred grand.
Yeah, a little over a hundred grand if we did that. Now, you can look at that in the future, I just didn't recommend that this year. Or you can just up your percentages if you want.
You don't have to do anything like that.
Nope, nope. And as I'm budgeting, just so you know, I don't, I'm, I'm just looking at numbers. I don't know who's doing what in any of those positions. I don't even look at that. I just look at what is the, what is the, the bottom line cost. So, if you're wondering, why does this person get paid more than this person? I have no idea. I just, all I do is look at the numbers.
So, quick question. I just noticed here, assistant varsity, uh, baseball, twenty-six hundred dollars. Assistant varsity softball, twenty-three fifty-six.
Should, we'll fix it, should be the same. Yep, I don't know why.
Because your percentage was different, seven four two five versus eight.
Yeah, I don't know, shouldn't have, shouldn't have been different, we'll fix it, yep. Well, you caught, you caught that last, a couple of years ago, you caught one of them. So it should, yeah, then you round that up to eight percent, yep. Yep, we can fix that.
And then on this, this back cage, this, uh, Title One migrant ESL director, that's seven thousand?
It is not, we have used it, we have. Yeah, it's, it's still there, but we don't pay anybody that.
And you would, you won't stick it in there almost without calories?
I'm the one doing it, so you would absolutely know. While you're, while you're looking, I, I would like to kind of talk about two, they're not on there, but, um, if you look at speech debate drama club, um, Mr. Noakes, and I don't, you probably don't know this, he has contributed an inordinate amount of time to help Ms. Redden with drama.
Really?
Yeah, I know. I know, but he goes to the practices, he helps out with everything, and, and I mean, and he's asked for nothing. He, he probably doesn't even know I'm, I'm talking about it right now, but I'm not saying it, you know, the same percentage or, or, you know, stipend amount and everything, but, you know, Stephen has a pretty healthy job that he keeps up with and does a pretty good job at it, and then volunteers to do this, so I don't think it would be inappropriate to, to think about that as well, if you guys are.
So she's at eight percent, I mean, are you thinking like a four percent, something like that?
Yeah, I mean, like I said,
Four percent?
He doesn't even know we're, we're talking about this, so. You know, he, his contribution helps keep a lot of those kids motivated.
There should be, oh, four percent.
I don't see it, but then.
It, it's. So it'd be thirteen hundred bucks, as an, as an assistance, as a debate coach.
Is that something he wants? Here's the question. I understand he's doing it, is he doing it?
For love of the game.
Is that what he's doing for?
I mean, it is, I mean, he, there, there's no, I mean, the skin of the game is that I think he likes to do it.
Okay.
And, and he likes to help the kids, I mean, it must be a passion of his somehow, because when, when Seth told me about it, I was like, really? But.
Through, through all the evaluations throughout the high school, throughout the course of the year, I just was looking at, when I looked down through this stipend of, you know, who has put in some work that's never received any compensation, and, and don't get me wrong, there's tons of people that invest endless amounts of hours and never receive compensation for, but with that being said, he is a major contributor to that program. If you went to any other place, he's there helping direct and run the plays and support, so it's just a gentleman.
I don't either, I think it's great.
I didn't either, until Seth, Seth told me, I was like, yes?
And once again, I haven't talked to him about it either, we just felt like it was worth mentioning to you that there's.
I think he needs, I think putting a stock in there is, is a good idea, what do you guys think?
Absolutely.
It would be half, like four.
Four percent.
So it'd be thirteen hundred.
I mean, he's a pretty classy guy, fellas, I mean, if you don't know him very well, he, he is just a good guy.
Well, and that's the thing is, and he's a good guy because he hasn't, to my knowledge, he hasn't asked anybody about this.
I think it's a good faith gesture of saying thank you.
I think that would be wonderful.
That's the kind of people we want, right?
Exactly, that's the kind of people we want to keep, you know. Okay, floor is open.
Okay, I'm not done talking.
We're handling this one at a time.
My apologies. There, I know, since everybody's doing good moving. I want to look down toward, and this is going to probably be a little bit more explanation on this one, go down to data manager. This will be Jan Harris. She takes care of first semester of all of our core data. Uh, she does, um, probably the biggest one is our, our October submission, that's, that's the really big one, but every other month, we have a core data submission. You know, we have an August one initially, then there's a big one in October, she also does a smaller one in December. I have been taking care of the second semester ones, which the biggest one is in June, and then there's a couple of others that are smaller. The, the thing about this is, it's, it's changed, because now, everything that is done second semester is always based on the October core data. So she ends up having to rerun that and recalculate it and redo it almost every month from October on. And I hold her captive, basically in June, to help me get mine done, because she literally has to rerun hers every time I get an error, because it will say October whatever, student hours, so she ends up having to go fix it. I'm not going to have time to do it anymore. And God love him, he doesn't know how to do it. So with, with Jan having to rerun October every time, I don't think it would be inappropriate to have her do all of it. I, I'm not asking to double the stipend, I'm not asking that, but if it were to increase, I don't think that would be inappropriate for the amount of time that's involved, because I know when we worked together in June, when I'm close, we stayed till six o'clock, because we didn't want to come back again, and getting that done. And it's, it's a lot of just mental.
It is a big deal.
It, it is, and it, I mean, and the reason it's a big deal is because, because now we are judged on our timely submission now. It used to not be a big deal, they would say, get it in, but now there's actually points on our A P R involved for our timely submission.
Is it June thirty?
Yes.
July first.
Don't you think that would be wise though, for someone for Seth to learn?
Absolutely, I mean, don't get me wrong, I mean, I, I will still.
Just one person doing it would be.
Well, and, and, and you're right, because you don't want, you don't want all your eggs in there, and then, you know, she goes away, and you're, you're right. And, and here's the other thing, she doesn't know how to run June right now anyway, so I would still be teaching both of them how to do it anyway, because it's a, it's just a different animal.
Well, we, we do cross-pollinate.
Oh, you have to.
A whole bunch of people do know more, like our ladies in the office, I can tell you that Lori knows a whole lot more about accounts payable than she would like.
Exactly, and I'm glad you do know all that stuff, okay, but still, you know, you know a part, and everybody knows a little bit, and so I, I agree with, let's give her some more.
So what are you suggesting?
Well, it's what is it?
Eleven point five and a half.
Yeah, seven thirty-eight.
Yeah. Open it up to.
I'm sorry, I, I blinked.
Three thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars, eleven point five percent. What's your thoughts?
Thirteen, with thirteen, get you somewhere around a little over four thousand. I'm looking at, well, I'm looking at one, we have a twelve, it's thirty-nine.
You know, I, I think, if you were asking my advice, which you're not, but I'm going to tell you anyway, what I'd say is go ahead and just vote to do it, and then he can come back and talk to Jan and see what would it take, and what are you willing to do it for, kind of thing, and get her input a little bit, because it is a big thing. That way, it doesn't look like we are just en masse making a decision for her. Does that make sense?
So just doing it fourteen percent comes to forty-five fifty.
Yeah, that's, I want that to be.
But I was just saying, I know he wants us to do that, but if we go, if we give both of them a three-and-a-half percent, that puts her at fifteen, right? And.
Who's the other one?
Noakes. Do three and a half percent for both of them.
Oh, oh, add, add three and a half percent to it, I see what you're saying. So that would take, that would take that one to forty-eight seventy-five, okay?
And we got forty-eight seventy-five, I'm just asking, how did you come up with that number?
All right.
If you just pull it out of the air, that's fine too.
No, just like we were kind of looking at some of the, the other, um,
Percentage.
Percentages on there.
Okay.
And these percentages are all over the place, a lot of them are, um, most of them, I can't say all of them, because I don't know that, but most of them are associated with other districts, like what, we're trying to stay even with what the other districts are paying. So that's why you see, these aren't just arbitrary numbers that were picked out of the sky, they might have been.
At one time, they were.
But right now, we, we try, right now, we try to stay even with the other, the other schools in the Big Eight, and some of them we're right there with, others we're off on, so.
Okay, so let's get back to Jan. What are we thinking on Jan again? I'm going to let you decide, Scott, is that what you're?
If you want, I can, I can talk to Jan about it, you know, and I mean, I honestly haven't spoken with her about it either.
You said fourteen percent, is that what you said?
Four, I mean, yeah, well, we, we talked, we talked fourteen, Matt said fifteen, so I mean, I could talk to Jan and say, you know, what, what do you think about this? And, you know, she could, we, we could talk about a number and everything, and then, you know, we'd come back later. The, the, these extra duty contracts, I mean, they don't have to go out, you know, write that second, so.
Matt, I think it's a good idea.
I was thinking three and a half percent for both of them for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, the two that he has brought up, so.
Do we need to make that motion in the minutes, or we just want to discuss?
Well, I think he wants to talk to her first, right? I, I would just say to, you know, approve the, you know, make a motion to approve the agenda with the additions that were discussed.
And then, and then anything else will have to be voted on next time.
Sure.
Well, unless you're doing it with a three-point-five. If you're, if you're approving the three-point-five for the assistant. And the.
You go ahead and do that, and then if it comes back, you, if.
I think so. I mean, if you want, we can leave it, we can, we can, we can put it at the fifteen, and if she comes back and says fifteen, oh my lord, I mean, that's, you know, what an insult.
I don't want to do that at all.
We can talk about it differently, but I don't.
She wouldn't say that, but you know.
No, but, you know, that, that, we could have a different conversation if, if she's like, you know, that's, that's a lot of work, you know.
Matt, I want to do.
Make the motion.
I'll make the motion. Three and a half, is that good, everyone?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. For, for the both. Yeah.
I just make recommendation for the discussed, to approve the extra stipend list with the additions that were discussed.
Yes.
It is moved to approve the stipend list with the additions as discussed, is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion?
I have a question. Who's our wellness coordinator?
Uh, it's our high school, no, it's, uh, Grammy's nurse now, isn't it?
Uh, yeah, it has to be.
Yeah. Do you want to do it too?
I've been there.
No, just asking, if you're, if that's your passion, I think we can start, yeah.
That's Rachel, Rachel Beckett.
Rachel Beckett.
Rachel Beckett.
So I was just asking if.
So you want to see this again, because one says get the printed sound, but I can print it for you once it gets done.
And Mary, Mary's made a, just so you know, one that's a little longer, but not everybody jammed on one line.
She just changes the percent and changes the number, so, yep.
Okay, anybody else got any questions, thoughts? Now, in a period, we shall proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve the stipend list, raise your right hand. Thank you, opposed. Motion passed six oh. Okay.
Move me and add Scott.
That's already new action, just make that motion.
That is, that is an action, I don't know.
I'll make the motion that we move Ron Mitchell from the bank of accounts and add Scott Charlton. I'll take it July one.
Second?
I'll second.
Sheila. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we shall proceed to vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, motion passed six oh, moving along. You want to discuss number five, somebody?
That was Lori and Ms. Charlton.
You want to take lead, or do you want me to?
Yeah.
So Assembly, we can purchase, they are the company that does our policies currently.
Our policies?
Board policies.
Board policies, they keep them maintained out there for us, they keep it all updated, they're the ones that send us what we've got to approve each deck that we have to approve all the time. And they also offer us, uh, this meetings. It's a module that you can purchase from them that would take us from paper to electronic at these meetings. Uh, we wouldn't have to mail the packets, it would take us also very, um,
Transparent.
Transparent is the word I was trying to think of with our district, because all of these, these things that you get in your packet will be online for the folks to see. All of our patrons can access, you know, and you will have, you would have your own login.
So could you make me a paper copy? I'm just telling you, if I don't have internet enough, that, I mean.
Yeah, we can do, or we can, or you can have a laptop sitting in front of you when you get here, and then you.
That's how they do it.
But timing obviously, he wouldn't want to look at it.
Right.
I would like to see it beforehand, yes.
I tried to find McDonald County, but this is just, just what it looks like, so.
This is their side, this, ours would be put up the same way.
So, let's see, that's this month's board meeting.
So how much does this cost?
Fifty-eight hundred dollars per year.
And in mailing, right now, we're mailing out thirty-five, almost four thousand dollars a year.
The transparency though, no, it's just not for our packets, that amount of money he's talking about on posters, but the transparency for our contracts. I mean, they get the board bill list, it's all there.
Yeah, it should be.
It should be, and it should be easy for them to access. This is fairly easy to navigate, so I'll just, whenever they send me their program evaluations, that'll be all on there, and, and I just dump it, you know.
So the bills would be on there, who would be able to see this?
Everyone.
Everyone.
All they've got to do is get on our website, and go to their site, like our board policies are right now in central office, they can go right there, click on it, and you basically see.
And this also takes care of us, our finances that we have to put up quarterly, they'd be up there every month.
Monthly.
So you don't have to remember to put them up quarterly, they're already up there, so, and makes it a lot easier on her.
Well, it just makes it better for you guys, because once I get something on there, you know, I could shoot you a text and say, hey, I've added some things you might want to get.
And you will have your own. You have your own.
Are you going to have computers here for us?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I would like, yeah.
So you can have your own, um, you'll have your own, as board members, you'll have your own login, which will take you to the stuff that is private.
Right.
So, any, any recommendations for hire or those things, so you get to see those earlier than when you show up at here, yeah, so that's.
And we do get a thousand dollars off of the cost, because they already have our dynamics because of our policies.
So is that the year we drew?
No, that is with that included, so, yeah, and they, they adjusted, I know if you talk to other districts, you'll find different pricing, because they did say they tier it according to what your population, what your enrollment is.
And you're a fan, so you're a fan of this?
Yes, yes, every, every one that I have talked to that has it has encouraged me for transparency and for you guys to be able to see it and get it quickly, and ease of prep, now I realize I'm going to have to go print.
So it'll also save your time, because she won't be sending out the emails, she won't have to type it up and send out the email to all the schools, all the schools, because it's, it'll already be posted on our website, so they don't have, we won't have to post things in the office or do that stuff anymore, because it's.
I think we still have to have it on the wall.
Well, here you do.
Yeah, what do you think?
We still have to have it on the wall.
I like it, it's simply just because there's more for the public to be able to see. All our program evaluations are now out there, which they should be anyway.
Yeah.
You know, um, and how the vote went, and every other thing that, that, that your board packets are, you know, aside from closed session items.
This might be a big star or M CIP or anything else.
Nope, it actually makes M CIP easier, because it's already there.
They have modules for that too.
But, and it'll cut down on the time Marty, it'll give Marty more time to do other things, because, you know, once, once a week, I'm emailing some, put this on the website, and it's financials or something like that, you won't have to do that anymore, because it'll, you know, Lori will drop it in the Dropbox, and it'll be there.
And it also, for the admin, it's not just board meetings. This meeting module can take care of any meeting that they decide that they need to do, if they want to touch all three campuses, you know, and have a trail, a plan of, okay, I need this, this person's got to approve this, and then it bumps to this person.
I can tell you this also, if we're able to put the title meetings on there, you know, that, that paper trail is essential for the feds, because they want, they want sign-in sheets, they want everything that you've submitted and everything, and if we can put that online too, that would probably be a great benefit.
Save time.
All right, well, I make a motion then, that we add Assembly.
It is been moved, is there a second?
I second it.
It is been moved and seconded, that we approve Simby as our software for meetings. Is there any further discussion? Discussion, seeing none, we shall proceed to vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, six oh.
They'll do a training course.
That's impressive. Let's hope it's a little better than the delegate assembly.
That's who does the training.
You will all get training lessons too, it's pretty easy, it'll be simple. Really, you'll just get your login and your thing, and that's all the training you need. It becomes a point, she is going to have the. It becomes a point, she is going to have the one that's got the training.
Just come and camp out up here a couple of days and...
That'll work for you.
Time and date for 2324 board meetings, you have that sheet in front of you?
I'll make that motion to accept it.
One second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Discussion, seeing none, we shall proceed to vote, all those in favor of the schedule, raise your right hand, opposed, motion passes six oh. All right, last but not least, summer paving projects.
You don't really need to, I would put it as an action, but you don't need to, if you want to, if you want to approve it and say, yes, we approved it, then you...
It's just a lot of money, we want to make sure you guys do it, but...
Yeah, anybody got any thoughts, we've heard the discussion, we've heard Ron, what do you think?